Good evening, everyone. Earlier, council was in a special closed session meeting, and I'd like to ask our city attorney, Mr. Murphy, to report out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the council was conferred with the city's labor negotiators regarding current negotiations with the Temple City Employee Association that also affect the unrepresented general and part-time employees. A full briefing was made, council discussion was held, but no reportable action was taken tonight. Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you. And we are closed for ours, closed session, and we will move into our regular meeting for May 16th, 2023. The time is 7:46. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Mann?
Here. And tonight for the invocation, we have Mr. Jerry Jambasian, the owner of Wonder Cleaners and Draperies located at 9136 Les Tunis Drive. Please all rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge afterward.
Thank you, Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to pray for you tonight. Let's bow in prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, once again, asking for your blessings upon the proceedings at this city council meeting. I pray that you would give your wisdom and discernment to our mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members, including our staff. You have gifted each one in unique ways for our benefit. Lord, we look forward to celebrating Temple City's 100th anniversary in less than two weeks. It will be a time of rejoicing in your faithfulness to us as a city, as we celebrate the next 12 months together. Thank you for all those pioneers before us that made this rejoicing and celebration possible. Thank you for a council that values public safety for its citizens, including our Neighborhood Watch meeting this Thursday emphasizing the importance of citizen awareness. We continue to pray for the unrest in our world and for protection for our military, law enforcement, and our firefighters who protect and serve us. In closing, Lord, thank you that we can celebrate the youth of our community, including gifted artists, scholars, and our youth committee. We ask this all in your name and for your glory. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Jerry. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we have Youth Committee Member Hannah Clock, who will be leading us in the pledge.
Good evening. Please face the flag, put your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have a number of ceremonial presentations, which is always the most exciting part of our meetings. First, just to do a quick check, do we have Ms. Valerie Munoz here tonight?
Yes, she is.
Okay. So we will come back to that if she shows up later. Next, we will go to next presentation, which is part of our own congressional district. Our Congress member Judy Chu hosts an artistic discovery contest, and we are very pleased to have both of the winners and honorees from this year's contest here tonight. First, I'd like to invite both winners up to the podium. We have Yanjun Cindy Liu, who is a 12th grader at Temple City High School and a resident, and we also have Larissa Cheng, who is also a 12th grader at Temple City High School and resident. And just for some background, the Congress member hosts, each congressional district hosts this artistic discovery contest, and I had the pleasure of actually attending that evening. It was hosted at the Huntington Library in San Marino. And we, when we were invited, we were told that two of our students from Temple City High were amongst the final, how many finalists were there? Do you recall, Cindy?
Nine.
Nine, okay. Thank you. There were nine finalists, and so we didn't know until the evening what place each of them actually placed. But I'd like to invite Cindy Liu to maybe give us a little bit of background on your artwork and also, you know, what inspired, what is it and what inspired you to do your art piece?
So for my art piece, it was mainly because I wanted to play around with contrast in an artwork. And then I created this piece for my AP Art and Design class because we were submitting our portfolio for a college board. And then for this piece, I wanted to create the contrast between the foreground and the background. And then I did so by making a really tense-mooded band in the foreground with a normal day of life in the background of a city. And then I chose New York City because I feel like that's where a lot of people experience something really important in life sometimes, like where they dream big about. Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Mayor has a question.
Yes, please.
Very, very nice, very impressive. What media is that? Is that acrylic?
Oh, it's mixed media. The background and most of the painting is acrylic painting. And then for the characters, I used pen to outline for some parts, and then I also used a color pencil to deepen the clothing.
Very nice, very impressive.
Thank you.
And it looks really great in person, so I was glad to be able to see that. Certainly, this image gives you a good idea of what it looks like. And also, you know, Cindy, congratulations for being the honorable mention amongst the final nine, which is already an impressive feat in and of itself. And I believe the Congress member Chu mentioned that your artwork will actually be on display in one of her district offices here. So she, I thought that was a pretty nice touch. I think she mentioned it was the Claremont or the Pasadena?
I think so. I think it's the Pasadena.
Pasadena office?
Yeah.
Okay. So if anyone happens to be by Congressman Chu's Pasadena office, you will see Cindy's artwork on display there. So Cindy, I do have a certificate of recognition for you. I will give it to you after I ask Larissa to also talk about her art piece, and I'll ask council to help me present this, and we'll get a photo.
All right, thank you.
And can we give a round of applause to Cindy? All right. Next, I'd like to recognize and ask Larissa Cheng to tell us a little bit about your art piece and what inspired you, what is it and what inspired you to do it?
So my art piece, When I Learn How to Fly, is also part of my AP Art portfolio, and my intent was to illustrate my immigrant story and basically describe my blind hope of wanting to bring my friends here with me. And I used symbolism and colors to illustrate it.
Great. Thank you, Larissa.
Thank you.
And just so everyone knows, Larissa placed first out of all the finalists.
And Larissa, yours will be hung in the Capitol Building, correct?
Yes.
A few months ago, I was in DC and enjoyed so much seeing all the artwork from previous winners that is hung there, and it's just amazing. So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Let's have everyone give a round of applause to Larissa.
Mayor has a question, too.
Yes, please, please.
Larissa, so, I mean, there are two figures in here. One got wings, one does not. Who, are you one of the figure? I mean, there was, you said about symbolism. What's the message he's trying to convey?
The one with wings is supposed to represent me, and the one without wings represents my friend.
Okay, so you're, if you know how to fly, then you'll be going about helping people. I mean, it looks like a disaster in the background, it looks like a building falling over or something, I don't know. So.
Well, my hometown, we don't get to enjoy a lot of things here, so I thought it would be nice if I could just bring them here and enjoy the freedom over here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions or comments from council?
Have you gone to Washington DC yet?
Not yet.
When is that?
It's supposed to be in June 20th.
Okay.
But I don't think I can attend the ceremony, so.
Hopefully.
Well, one of these days, hopefully you'll get back there before the year's up. One of these, hopefully before the year's up, you'll be able to get back there and see your art exhibited.
Hopefully, you and your family would go there, yeah.
So, and I guess on a personal note, I guess I was very touched by both Cindy and Larissa's artwork, but Larissa, for your art piece, it does kind of touch home for me because I guess I don't necessarily have the same immigrant's story as you, but it's relatable to me because I, many of you here might know, I was born in Hong Kong and immigrated here. So there is certainly a contrast in how, in the types of freedoms that we enjoy here in the United States versus what is going on, whether it's in Hong Kong or other parts of the world. So thank you for sharing that experience and sharing your art. We're just so impressed by the achievements that our students and residents here in Temple City have done. I'm just frankly blown away by it, and I'll share one more thing. During the night of the awards, the way they did it was they announced the order backwards. So they started with honorable mention, and then they worked their way up to the first-place winner. And so when they announced the second-place winner, there was this collective gasp in the room because then we knew Larissa won first, even though they hadn't officially announced her. So that was a very special moment. I know school board member Donna Giorgino was also there, and our superintendent, Dr. Arkuna, was there, as well as Temple City High principal and your art teacher. She was there, and I'm sure she was very proud of your work and all of your accomplishments. So with that, I'd like to invite council to join me in presenting these two certificates to both Larissa and Cindy, and let's get a photo up at the front. Next, we also have another amazing distinguished student from Temple City High School, Jackie Lee, who was selected as the 2023 Edison Scholar. That's one of 30 students selected this year from throughout the Southern California Edison's Service Territory.
She's not here.
She's not here.
Is she here?
She is.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and staff and audience. I was waiting for Jackie Lee. I am Marissa Castro Salvati. I'm one of the Government Relations Managers. I'm actually Jeanette Soriano's counterpart. I have the other surrounding cities in the area. And I was waiting for her. I thought we had confirmed her attendance, but if I could just take this opportunity so that the folks in the audience would know about our Edison Scholars, wanted to just share with you tonight as well that since 2006, Southern California Edison has actually given $15 million to about 796 students each year. And throughout the years, we had given $40,000 to each student since last year. Now, this year, it's a little bit nicer because they've increased it to 10,000. So the student Jackie Lee is one of the recipients of $50,000 to be received within the four-year span. So one of the criteria is actually to have the student select a four-year college. They have to be a resident of Edison Service Territory, and they also have to have a good GPA as well as submit a video. And a lot of the videos that were reviewed were actually pretty amazing, so very heartwarming, really creative videos. And we have a group of committee members that review these applicants. And so I wanted to just, you know, honor Jackie, but I don't know what had happened. I was trying to, you know, connect with the person, and nobody was answering. So I do apologize, you know, for her not being here, and hopefully she's okay because we thought we had confirmed that she was going to be in attendance. But at least I wanted to give this opportunity to let you know about our Edison Scholars program. That program actually is going to start sometime in fall, so students who are senior in high school can apply, and this is a STEM scholarship. And so come the latter part of this year, we will actually go through the applications, and we will select the 30 students at the beginning of 2024. So thank you again for this opportunity, for allowing us to at least share with you the information on the Edison Scholars. Temple City High School, I'm sure, is proud of Jackie, and I understand from Jeff that she was actually honored at the school board. Was she? So she was at the school board as well, but unfortunately, we will let you know as to, hopefully she's okay because she was supposedly confirmed to attend. So again, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council, and staff, for this opportunity to just share the information. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming here tonight to share that about what Edison is doing. $50,000 is certainly a pretty handsome sum, and I'm sure her parents and everyone are very proud of her being able to get that. I do have a short blurb here, even though she's not here, I will still share with everyone. It says, "Jackie found a love for environmental science and how it intersects with other scientific fields such as biology, chemistry, and physics through her teachers and various science competitions. And as was mentioned earlier, she plans to pursue a STEM education and career." So we'll make sure to get this certificate to Jackie so that she knows this is for her. All right. Next, we move on to a proclamation that I almost want to say this might be the first time we've done something like this. So it's a, I take, it's a bit of a privilege and honor for me to do this, and also in tandem with our youth committee here tonight, who will be receiving this proclamation. So May of 2023 is widely recognized across the nation as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And so I won't read the whole thing, but the part that I think strikes me the most here on this proclamation is, "Whereas the city of Temple City is proud to celebrate this month, we invite all Temple City residents of all backgrounds to experience rich cultures and develop a deeper understanding and appreciation of the role Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have played in our nation's history and continue to have today. And therefore, I, William Mann, Mayor of Temple City, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2023 to be Asian American Pacific Islander Month." And I'd like to invite the youth committee up to receive this.
I would like to recognize achievements, culture, and history of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. The youth committee's mission is to build bridges between generations, and we aim to inspire and empower everyone from all backgrounds. Our goal is to amplify the diverse voices that need to be heard and encourage everyone to dream bigger because there is a potential in each one of us. And I would also like to introduce Temple City High School's very own Korean Language Club. With us today are President Janice Lee and Kaylee Wan, who will be sharing a few words in honor of AAPI.
My name is Janice Lee, and I'm the founder and president of the Korean Language Club at our school.
Good evening. My name is Kaylee Wan, and I'm the vice president of the Korean Language Club.
So today, we just want to share why we decided to found the club last year and also what our purpose is within our school. So actually, I grew up in Grand Rapids, Michigan, which is a small city a bit south of Lansing. And during my time there, I would often be asked, "Where are you from?" And I would always say, "I'm from Korea," although I was born in Los Angeles. But when I would say that, I would often get the response, "Oh, is that somewhere in China?" And it wasn't a big deal to me at the time, but I remember vividly. It might seem kind of like a fun song just to many people, but a very important song to me became very viral in the year of 2012, which is called "Kangnam Style" by Psy. So that song actually put Korea on the map, even in Grand Rapids, Michigan. And a lot of people began to become very interested in where I was from and my food that was normally just kind of shunned to the side, like this, yeah, they weren't really, they didn't know what food I ate, but they began to become curious and more open to it. So that opportunity gave me the chance to share more about who I am. And moving to Temple City a year later made sharing all the more easier. I, it was my first time being in such an appreciative and accepting environment, regardless of where you come from. And that's also why, when I became a high schooler at Temple City High School, I decided that I wanted to found the Korean Language Club because Korean, the Korean language isn't actually a part of our curriculum. It's not offered at our school. And my mother is a Korean language teacher, and seeing her share our language with other people and seeing, like, people from all different backgrounds being able to appreciate it regardless of where they're from was very heartening. So it was something I wanted to share to our school as well. And Kaylee's going to share a bit about our purpose and mission.
So the Korean Language Club, or as we call it KLC, our purpose is to share the Korean culture to students in order to add to the culturally diverse and appreciative environments, environment that we have on campus. The interest in Korean culture among students remains prominent, given the influx of local and global attention that it's recently been receiving. In our club, members are turned biweekly in hopes to learn how to read, write, and speak, and develop an understanding of the language, as well as appreciate and immerse themselves into a new culture. Through this club and the recent attention that Korean culture has received, I was able to reconnect with my culture and my family and feel proud as I see others who are so eager and interested in learning about it as well. We hope that this club continues to spread our culture throughout Temple City High School and add to the diverse and culturally appreciative environment provided.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janice and Kaylee, for sharing. I actually wasn't aware there was a Korean Language Club, so that's pretty neat to find that out. I don't recall in high school ever knowing that there was a Korean Language Club. I mean, I didn't go to TC High, but thank you for sharing your story, and I think it goes a long way to know that the next generation is recognizing and understanding the importance of their culture. And what the, what your parents and your family went through as immigrants is very different than what you may be experiencing as a second-generation immigrant growing up, growing up as Americans here in America. So I see there are many different approaches, many different ways that everyone's celebrating it. So thank you for sharing. And also, just to, this kind of is a nice segue to our next item, which is our Youth Committee update, and I'm pleased to see all of our Youth Committee members here tonight. I'd like to invite you all up to speak about the two objectives that you all have been working on this year, resources for the unhoused population and safety and emergency preparedness.
Good evening, council. Tonight, we are here to report on our emergency and safety preparedness objective. In addition to the verbal report, we have prepared many exercises that, which would require your participation. We thank you in advance for your involvement.
So in terms of the fire safety department, we were lucky enough to be under the amazing expertise of one of our own public safety officers here. In the fire safety workshop, the committee learned that it is important to know what type of fire you are fighting. Not all fires are the same, and knowing how to identify a fire can help you more easily and effectively prevent a minor situation from escalating into an emergency situation. Fire is classified on the basis of the kind of fuel it burns. Fire extinguishers are classified as types A, A, B, C, B, C, or K. It is important to use the right type of extinguisher on the specific class of fire to avoid personal injury or damage to property. The wrong type of extinguisher could cause electrical shock, explosion, or spread the Class A fire involves solid materials such as wood, paper, cloth, and involves solid materials, and the easiest thing to use to extinguish these types of fires are water or foam extinguishers. Class B fires involve flammable liquids such as grease oil, paint, and solvents. The thing to note about, to note about Class B fires as compared to Class A is you don't want to be, you don't want to use water to extinguish these fires, but instead use foam, powder, or carbon dioxide extinguishers to limit the fire's oxygen supply. Class C fires are, involve electricity such as the use of live electrical equipment, including electrical panels, motors, or wiring circuits. In this case, you would also not want to use water or foam extinguishers to extinguish the fires as they conduct electricity and compose a greater danger. If it is safe to do so, it is recommended that you disconnect the fire, the equipment from the power source, and once disconnected, the fire is a different class of fire, usually Class A, in which you can use water or foam extinguishers. For Class D fires, where, in which combustible metals are being burned, which is including magnesium or aluminum, most, the most common would be in industrial workplace setting, which require dry power extinguishers. I'd like to, I'd like to invite my fellow Youth Committee member, Priscilla, and thank our Public Safety Officer, Mr. Brian Arizumi, for teaching us all about our fire and safety.
And lastly, for Class K, K stands for kitchen, and for Class K fires, they normally involve grease and oil. And to, and for- And to, and for a kitchen fire, you would want to use a wet chemical extinguisher. And so here we have a fire extinguisher. You would want to follow the ABC protocol, which are due to...
Can you try and talk into the mic?
You, you would hold the, the can upright, and then you would pull the ring. And then next, you would stand about eight feet away from the fire and sweep side to side, and you would want to make sure to cover the base of the fire.
Kiana, can you show the fire extinguisher to the council members?
And I believe you said that the fire extinguisher is for what rating, this one?
Can you show where the class is?
Is it ABC? It's ABC.
So it's very versatile.
All right.
Did you all actually get to use it during the exercise?
Absolutely.
Oh, they're going to do a demonstration right here.
We took a field trip to the city yard, as chaperoned by Mr. Brian Arizumi, and we were able to each individually practice extinguishing a fire with your foam extinguisher.
Very good. Does that mean they're all certified, Brian? Cert, certified?
They're cert certified.
Okay, that's the next step. Get them cert certified.
Next up, we did CPR. In, in the CPR and first aid workshop, we learned that emergencies are unpredictable, and they can happen anytime and anywhere. Knowledge of CPR and first aid is beneficial in any circumstance. Having a basic understanding of first aid and CPR can save a life. First aid is urgent care that we give to the patient to prevent damage and future disabilities. Basic first aid training enables you to help injured people until assistance comes in the case of an accident or other medical emergencies.
CPR stands for, CPR stands for cardiopulmonary resuscitation, and it's a medical technique that can be used to save lives in emergencies, where heartbeat and breathing has stopped. CPR works by stopping the person's blood flowing, blood from flowing until healthcare professionals can help them. To initiate CPR, the first step you want to do is to check that the area is safe. Then, you're going to lay the person on their back and call for 911. The next step is to check for breathing and open their airway. And if they're not breathing, you want to start CPR. To perform CPR, you'll perform 30 chest compressions followed by two rescue breaths. And you want to repeat this process until an ambulance or an automated external defibrillator arrives, or an AED.
So, have I just enjoyed my day?
As you can see, we have a man down. The first, as Priscilla has initiated to us, the first step in the CPR process is to make sure the scene is safe. Priscilla, is the scene safe? The scene is safe. So now, we must make sure that Kevin's airways are open. Can you please ensure that Kevin's airways are open? Great. Is he laying on his back? Now, I'm going to instruct someone to call 911. Isabel, please call 911. She's calling 911. As Isabel calls 911, I'm going to ask someone else. Hannah, get the AED. Hannah's going to get the AED. Now, as Priscilla is here, while they're calling 911 and looking for an AED, Priscilla is going to attempt to perform chest compressions on Kevin. Place the heel of your hand on the lower half of his sternum. Place your other hand on the top of the other hand. The palms of both hands should be flat against his chest, and fingers should be interlaced. This ensures that she has the most effective position to perform effective and efficient CPR. Use both your arm strength and the strength of your upper body to do effective chest compressions. We're not going to practice today. Push at least two inches deep. This is, this is important to ensure that the chest compressions are actually effective. You're going to compress at a rate of at least 100 times per minute. For those of you that are CPR-trained or who have attended some CPR classes, you may remember that we like to play the song, it's by the Bee Gees, it's called "Staying Alive." Ah, 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 "Staying Alive." So, if you know this song, you can help chant it out loud to yourself or play it out loud to remember the exact beats and rhythm to, for effective CPR. It is, the proper CPR ratio is 30 chest compressions to two breaths. So, to demonstrate the speed at which to perform CPR, we will be clapping along to the song "Staying Alive" by the Bee Gees. Thank you for participating, council. We, I just do want to reiterate too, the American Heart Association recently announced that chest compressions are sufficient for, efficient for CPR. And although the rescue breaths are also very effective, they are not, because especially due to, in light of our recent COVID-19 pandemic, sometimes as, you know, especially as a passerby, you might not necessarily want to endanger yourself by giving rescue breaths. So the American Heart Association has announced that chest compressions are sufficient, if that is all the rescuer would like to provide. Thank you.
Oh, we have a question from...
You mentioned AED. What is an AED?
Yes. So, in this practice scenario, I was able to ask Hannah to locate an AED. So, an automated external defibrillator, or an AED, is an external device that provides shocks to the individual who is, who is needing to be resuscitated. In the event that we were able to locate an AED, I would continue providing chest compressions until an AED was located. And then, as soon as it's located, what you're going to do is you're going to move any articles of clothing on the chest. We apply two pads that are connected to the AED, the automated external defibrillator, one at the top, one on the, one at the top left and the other across the, across their side. And the, the AED is very simple and very effective to use. You turn it on, and it gives you instructions on how to provide CPR. The AED will instruct you to perform, will give you clicks and allow you to perform CPR for a given amount of time. After a certain period of time, they will analyze the heart rhythms of the individual and provide shocks as needed. They will continue to monitor their heart rhythms and continue to provide shocks until the, the individual has been resuscitated or until emergency, emergency personnel has arrived.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
So, if you're not a Bee Gees fan, I think there are other songs that you can use as well, right?
Absolutely.
Do you remember which they were?
There's Baby, the Baby Shark song. There's also another one, I don't remember the name, but...
I think there was a Michael Jackson, wasn't there, Brian?
There's one, there's another one, but it's a little bit sad. It's another one catches the dust, another one bites the dust, so. I wouldn't play that song if you're, if you're doing CPR. Thank you, council. I'd like to pass this along to Isabel, Hannah, and Sarah.
Yes, so as part of our emergency preparedness, we also learned about disaster supply kits, again with Mr. Arizumi. And so, in the disaster supply kits workshop, we learned that after an emergency, you may need to survive on your own for several days. Being prepared means that having your own food, water, and other supplies need to last for several days. A disaster supply kit is a collection of basic items your household may need in the event of an emergency. However, all households are different, and so each family or individual's kit should be customized to meet specific needs such as medication, infant formula, and pet food.
So the right emergency kit helps people deal with a wide range of disasters, from hurricanes to fires to pandemics or earthquakes. Having a disaster kit ensures that people can help themselves at work, school, or on the go. So items included in these kits can help respond to basic first needs and prevent illness, illness. Help may not be ready right away, which is why the federal government recommends that people have supplies to handle, handle themselves for at least 72 hours.
A good rule to remember when preparing a disaster survival kit is the rule of threes. Rule number one is to prepare three kits: one for home, one for work, and one for your car. The supply kit for the home should include essential food, water, and supplies for 10 to 14 days per person. The work kit should be ready in one container and ready to grab and go in case of evacuation. And your car kit should contain jumper cables, flares, food, water, and utility items. Rule number two is to prepare three days of supply per person, per pet. Help may not be ready right away. You should have food, you should have supplies for at least 72 hours. And rule number three is basics, disaster supply kits should include water, food, and utility.
And so, as for water supply, your disaster supply kit should include at least one gallon of water per person, per day for at least three days for drinking and sanitation, because you do not know how long it will take for you to get a clean source of water. And so, as you can see, these are some of the examples that are shown as to how you can store your emergency water. And then, as for food, at least three days of non, three-day supply of non-perishable food are recommended. And so, for one of our workshops, Mr. Arizumi actually brought us an entire spread of non-perishable foods to try, that you would usually pack in, in emergency supply kits. So for example, MREs, protein bars, anything like that, that doesn't have an expiration until, I want to say 2035, so they last a good shelf life. And so, we actually have an example of non-perishable foods. We have some freeze-dried blueberries for you all to try.
Council, they're placed in front of you in the little baggie.
Can we eat them now?
Yes, these berries are due to expire in 2050.
2050?
I think I'll be around.
Not bad. I like them.
It's like cereal.
Hannah, can you pass the container to the council?
One more thing to mention is utility items, such as things on the screen. You should always make sure to pack utility items in a disaster survival kit. I'm now going to pass it on to situational awareness with Krista, Amir, and Melanie.
Good evening, city council and city staff. My name is Krista.
I'm Amir.
And I'm Melanie.
And we are presenting on situational awareness. In the situational awareness workshop, we learned the importance of being aware and mindful of our surroundings, to notice people and objects around us, and to identify entry and exit points.
We learned to be aware of the elements around us, limit situational overload, and to stay vigilant and trust our instincts, because you know, if a disaster does happen, you might not have access to service, you might not have, you know, a booklet on wilderness survival, or you know, just survival in general in front of you. So it's a good idea to, you know, make sure that you can believe in yourself and that you're relying on your own knowledge.
To demonstrate situational awareness, we would like to ask the council and the audience to participate in this next exercise. Please take the time to close your eyes. Is everyone's eyes closed? Please close your eyes. Thank you. Do you remember how many youth committee members are wearing black polo shirts? How many exits are at the council chambers? What color is Mr. Cook and Mr. Murphy's jackets?
You guys can open your eyes now. And if you were struggling for a few of these, a few of those answers in the future, just make sure to be aware of the situations surrounding yourself. Thank you. I'll pass it off to Hannah.
So, to further promote what we have learned in our workshops, we had made billboard messages regarding safety and emergency preparedness, and they were displayed on Rosemeat Boulevard between the, between the months of November to May.
Thank you, Hannah. With the completion of our safety and emergency preparedness workshop, this brings us to the end of our term at the youth committee.
All right, round of applause.
We would like...
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought you were done, sorry.
That's all right, it's okay. We would like to thank the city council, especially Mayor Pro Team, Tim Chavez, and City Manager Cook for your support of the youth committee. And a big special thanks to Public Safety Supervisor, Mr. Arizumi, for conducting all the workshops and making it memorable for us. Thank you. This concludes our updates, and we are open to questions if council has any for us.
Any council questions?
Well, I was there, so I don't know if I have any questions.
Thank you so much for your time.
You know, I do want to give a shout out, of course, as Lori had mentioned, of course, to Brian Arizumi for what a fantastic job. I think he deserves another round of applause. He really worked hard with the, with the students and gave them basically the same training that our CERT members get, and concluded with a meeting where they actually got their official hats. So, you should have worn those tonight, maybe, huh? But they did a great job, and of course, Peggy and Jillian is always in leading this group. I know they have one more meeting this year, our final meeting of the year, where we unfortunately are going to have to say goodbye to four of our graduating members. And I believe the meeting is, what, June 1st? So everyone's invited, it'd be June 1st at 5:30, and if anybody's interested, please attend. And those who are interested in being part of the youth committee next year, of course, we encourage you to attend as well, so. Job well done.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. That was a very well-done presentation. And thanks for surprising us with all the demonstrations and...
Oh, I forgot, what is this? Is this our little first aid kit?
It's a souvenir emergency kit with some Band-Aids, Neosporin, Orment.
Thank you.
Thank you, very nice.
Thank you.
So for, for next year's youth committee, I volunteer Mr. Cook to be the CPR model.
What do real demonstration this time?
You know, I don't know if, some of you may remember, back, I think it was 2009, 2010, a few of us were up here in the dais. We actually had a gentleman have a heart attack right here in the chambers. And he died right there in the middle of the floor. Fortunately, our fire department, which as you know, is just a little ways down, responded immediately. I think they brought him back to life twice.
No, it was like four times.
I think Brian, you were here, right?
Yes.
Brian ran and got the...
I think Brian got everything going and...
Yeah, myself and Sergeant Austin, at the time, administered CPR until the fire department came in and they were transported with a defibrillator, and they had a defibrillator twice, then out to the hospital.
Was it Jeffrey Briggs? Why, is his name still?
Yeah. He got revived like four times.
Right here. And so it does work. So, so what you guys have learned does work. And I know that hopefully you'll never, it's one of those kind of things where, I think it's like insurance, you hope you never have to use it, but it's there just in case. And you guys are going to be much better for it, especially those who are going off to college and will be away from home, so. Good job.
All right. Great work. Thank you for coming, and we will, I'd like to have council and the youth committee maybe get a picture up here, because it's rare to have all of you together. together.
I know that their camera's shy, but could we get Brian, Jillian, and Peggy up here?
Absolutely.
Come on, Brian. Just put it on the floor down here.
Brian! Great, thank you.
Must be a longer ceremonial.
All right. Now we move to public comments on items not listed on the agenda. We do have one request from Ms. Mary Snee.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I might mention, she mentioned the automatic defibrillator, defibrillator, I can't really get my words out now. When the high school first introduced those many years ago, within the first year, it saved the life of one of our students who, he had a lifelong heart problem, and he collapsed going between classrooms, and two of the coaches saw it, they grabbed the device.
AED. AED.
Thank you. And saved his life. He actually proceeded, not long after that, he had open-heart surgery, which they were trying to hold off having him having to do, but he knew it was coming sometime in his life, but it did save his life right in the middle of changing classrooms. You did, now I think you bought two of them for the high school.
Yes.
So thank you, Quanis. Anyway, as you know, next Friday is Temple City's 100th anniversary of the founding on the 26th of May. That weekend, we're kicking off the centennial celebration, so hopefully you'll be able to join us as we kick it off. This will just be the first event, the students, we will have some students at the schools dressing up like what they think a 100-year-old person looks like. I know 100-year-old people, and they, they're a lot friskier than I think what the kids have in their minds, but we've been enjoying meeting with Adam and Brian and the Parks and Rec Department people in putting plans together. There is plans for a big event this fall, but we are kicking it off next weekend, and we're looking forward to a big celebration. There'll be events going on throughout the summer at the concert series, so we hope to see lots of people from Temple City celebrating this big anniversary, this is a big one. So we appreciate the input we've been getting from the city, and we hope to see all of you next week. The museum will be open this weekend, we'll be training some new docents, and we'll be having, another thing that's going on at the schools is that we've enlarged pictures from the founding of Temple City, and those will all be displayed in all the school offices over the next year, so the students are aware of what's going on, so. If you can just help spread the word. I know there's going to be a special edition of the Connect magazine, celebrating the centennial, so we really appreciate that. And Donna Georgino and Bob Westgate, who is the president of the Historical Society, she is actually the vice president, they are working on, you know, one of those books like Arcadia has, Dordi has, a lot of the cities, it's basically historic pictures and a little bit of history, so hopefully we'll have that before the year is out.
Is it Saturday or Sunday?
Sunday, the 28th.
28th, and do they need to buy tickets ahead of time?
We prefer it, if they could. Yeah, there is a very large sign in front of the museum. If you go up the street, you'll see a big giant sign in front talking about the centennial, and I know some of you are probably pie makers. I bet you are, you're secret pie makers. Part of the celebration that day is for having the best pie baker in Temple City contest.
That's for which Sunday?
A week from this coming Sunday, the 28th.
Oh, I thought it was this Sunday.
This Sunday is when the museum will be open, but the 28th is, we tried to get a weekend that was close, close to the actual founding date, which is the 26th.
The problem is, it's the Memorial Day weekend?
It is, but... Yeah. Can't be helped. So anyway, there's a giant sign in front with a QR code, if you want to just scan the information or give us a call, and we'll have plenty of food for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Mary, I had noticed on the flyer, if people wanted to pay in advance, they could pay by Zelle, using Zelle?
Yes, yes.
Okay, or they could write, or they could write a check to...
They could write a check to the Historical Society of Temple City. You can, they can go to the website also to do it that way, and that's how you can do it with Zelle.
Okay, great.
Or you can stop by the museum Sunday and drop it off.
Sounds good, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? All right, seeing none, we move to the consent calendar, and I know, Madam City Clerk, you had a comment on one of the items?
Yes, Mayor. City Council, with your consent, staff would like to make a correction to Consent Calendar Item 7D. 7D is a final subdivision map approval for parcel map number 73518, a three-unit condominium subdivision project, and the location of the project should indicate 9040 Broadway, so this is a typo error, a clerical error, so if you would allow the correction.
So it's just from 6040 to 9040? Okay, all right, that's noted. Are there any items that council wants to pull, or is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And just to clarify, that motion includes the changes this Madam City Clerk made?
Yes.
All right, so motion, a second, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. Next, we have a public hearing, 8A introduction and first reading of Ordinance Number 23-1071, amending Section 9-1T-21 of the Municipal Code related to SB 9. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Mann, and members of the council. This is an action that we're taking in working with the state of California related to our SB 9 ordinance. I'll turn it over to our community director, Mr. Reimers.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Just so everybody's on the same page, SB 9 is Senate Bill Number 9, and what that bill at its most simplest way, what it said was that one single-family lot can be subdivided, and then two lots, into two lots, and you can build on each of those two new dwellings. Or you can have one single-family lot that can be built with four dwellings. That was passed in September of 2021, and SB 9 was then signed into law. January 2022, City Council approved ordinances that put that into our code, and then subsequent to that, the state of California contacted us and expressed some concerns about our ordinance. And so this ordinance that's before you tonight will make some changes based on the conversations that have occurred between the state and with staff. So the proposed ordinance would provide clarity regarding the number of units that are allowed, so when there is no lot split, the code would say you're allowed to have two urban dwellings and two accessory dwelling units, or you could have two urban dwellings and two junior ADUs. Right now, our code did not really specify what the maximum number of units was when there was not a lot split. When it comes to the maximum size, the state advises to change our code as well there. So the old code said the maximum size of an urban dwelling could not exceed 800 square feet. The new code would fall back on the maximum floor area ratios and the lot coverage in the zoning code, so there'd be no standard maximum on all lots, it would just fall back onto the single-family floor area ratio and lot coverage standards.
Does that mean it's, so where there is two ADUs, two dwelling units, the total would not exceed the floor area ratio?
Yes.
Is that how the control?
And then lastly, the third change that the ordinance proposes is regarding open space, so in the code, there's a requirement that these urban dwelling lots would need to provide open space. The way our code originally was written was that it fell back on the R3 open-space standards, and after conversation with the state, they advised us to change that to the R2 zone requirements.
Mr. Reimers, that is more restrictive, isn't it, in R2? That means we have to provide more, they have to provide more open space?
Really, the percentage is the same between R2 and R3, there's just some dimensional requirements that are the difference between the two codes. Really, the width and the length of the open space that is provided. So those are the three changes that the state has advised us to make right away, so in order to do that, we're recommending that you introduce this ordinance for first reading by title only, waive further reading, and schedule a second reading for our next meeting on June 6th.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilmember Sternquist?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem?
No.
Councilmember Yu? Councilmember Viscara?
Scott, is that, are those requirements much more onerous than what we have?
It does open up the size of the SB 9 units. From the maximum of 800 square feet, it does allow for some larger-sized units. That's the most dramatic change. The other two are not substantial changes. Really, the first change is just a clarification to make sure that we're all on the same page.
I just have one question, regarding the courtyard standards, when it says it only applies to new construction, could you remind us what that definition means?
Yeah, so under SB 9, somebody can take an existing structure and subdivide it into two urban dwelling units. In that case, we would not require them to provide a courtyard, because then they would have to perhaps demolish the structure in order to provide that courtyard. That's why the code is written that it's only if something is being torn down and a new building is being built. According to our code, a structure is considered a new structure when more than 50% of the roof and 50% of the walls have been removed.
And that 50% is of the original structure?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there any final questions or comments from council?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right, then may I have a motion for this item?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we introduce Ordinance Number 23-1071, first reading by title only, amending Title 9, Chapter 1 of the Municipal Code, related to urban dwellings and urban lot splits, and finding the ordinance exempt from C1. And two, waive further reading of Ordinance Number 23-1071, and schedule a second reading of Ordinance 10, I'm sorry, Number 23-1071 for June 6, 2023.
We have a motion and a second. Any objections? Seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance Number 23-1071, an ordinance at the City Council...
Madam Clerk, could we get a roll call vote?
I'm sorry. Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes, and may we please read the ordinance?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance Number 23-1071, an ordinance at the City Council of City of Temple City, California, amending Title 9, Chapter 1 of the Temple City Municipal Code regarding urban dwellings and urban lots split pursuant to Senate Bill 9.
All right, thank you. Next, unfinished business, we have none. We move on to new business, Item 10A, Streetscape Improvements on Las Tunas Drive. I'll have Mr. City Manager, Mr. Cook, start us off.
Thank you, Mayor Mann. If I could, grab the clicker. As we pull up the presentation, tonight is partially discussion and partially looking for some direction in terms of potential ad hoc that we would look for in the update to the Las Tunas infrastructure. Just a quick moment, we'll pull up the presentation. If you can scroll, if you don't mind, thank you so much. Thank you, Scott. So tonight, one, we're gonna update you on some of the survey work on the streetscape that exists on Las Tunas Drive, ask if you'd like to consider establishing a council ad hoc, and also direct staff to bring back some potential options as well. So a little bit of background, from about 2013 to 2016, the City Council did consider some conceptual redesigns of Las Tunas and really upending its infrastructure in terms of really creating a pedestrian-friendly street, in really transforming it in terms of what it is today, with bike lanes, some traffic calming, shortened sidewalks, pedestrian improvements, and a new lighting system. And one of the challenges that we have, quite frankly, is that it was well, when it was updated in the 1980s, it was really well, really very well constructed, but over time, that type of infrastructure needs to be updated and repaired, and so that's one of the challenges that we have with the infrastructure on Las Tunas. The, during 2016, some of the larger plans that were envisioned for Las Tunas were abandoned, and in 2017, our architect, Gavidegadell, provided some ideas, one of which you'll see in the presentation tonight, in terms of some, looking at the existing street structure, sidewalks, and sidewalk widths and lengths, and also too, looking at potentially some other general improvements. Most recently, you've asked if you'd like to look at some revitalization or improvement options, so just a basic overall survey, and this is from Kaufman-Toloma, so this is a very wide expansive area, just to give you some dimensions or some of what your, what infrastructure is there. We have about 49 different trash receptacles, 55 benches, 128 planters. One of the challenges that we are having right now...
I'm sorry, when you say 128 planters, are those those round cement?
Yes, those are those, those are those round cement.
So we have 128 of those on Las Tunas?
Yes, we do. So if you think, sorry, if I need to go backwards here. In terms of the overall scope of Las Tunas, it's extremely wide, and we're gonna make a suggestion tonight to actually think of one section at a time, and I'll explain why staff has suggested this one section. But a couple other challenges that we are, we have been dealing with and we're trying to fix is, one is the ficus trees closest to Temple City Boulevard, about one block in each direction, north and south, have actually been, have a whitefly infestation. So we've spent about six, about $5,000 to $6,000 right now to actually, our West Coast Arborist, along with our tree crew, has done some treatment on those ficus trees, but it will take about six to 12 months to know if that treatment has been effective. You may have noticed the difference between some of the trees that are north on Las Tunas, excuse me, on Temple City Boulevard, north of Las Tunas, both east and west, I don't have the exact amount of trees that actually have the infestation, but there are some that do, but it's going to take about six to 12 months to really know if that treatment is holding, and if potentially those ficus trees have to be removed. The other thing with ficus trees too is while they are wonderful in terms of their look, and they stay green all day long, one of the things they do, as everybody knows who lives in Southern California with ficus trees, is their root system is very destructive to infrastructure. Credit to our staff, credit to actually the designers beforehand, and the way they planted those trees, the locations of which they planted it, and the way they dealt with the pavers, it's quite miraculous that we don't have more infrastructure damage than we do. It's just started in the last about five to seven years to really start both show some wear and tear, but actually show the uprooting that has created some damage to some of the pavers, and the irrigation system that's there, that's really started to show, for lack of a better term, its long-term wear and tear. But again, credit to past... But again, credit to past staff who really did a great job of actually designing, installing it. It's just over a multi-decade period, it's inevitable that those ficus trees are going to create that level of damage. For example, with the irrigation system, what's happening is, why we're seeing some of the paver damage is the ficus tree is actually looking for water sources. So it's actually hitting towards where the irrigation may be dripping just a tad, but the root system is actually trying to find that water, and that's why you're seeing some of the uplift in those, in those pavers.
Are those trees being watered by the irrigation system?
No, they are not. They are looking, they are looking for water.
So how do they get watered?
They get water through just-
By hand?
There's, there's no, no, rain, essentially.
Just rain?
Mm-hmm. They're so well established, so within the system, that it doesn't need any additional watering. And ficus are an extremely resilient species of tree. That's, again, they were fast growing and they're, they're resilient and they're green all year long. And it's why most, a lot of cities throughout Southern California actually planted ficus trees for those reasons. But the flip side is the infrastructure damage that we have.
How about the fact that they're a mess?
That is another challenge as well. So, and I'll show you real quick, sorry, I'll go backwards. One of the things that it does do is, you can see the before and after, is that it leaves, leaves tons of droppings. So we actually did a deep cleaning, most recently, on around the week of May 6th. And it took almost four days for the team to go from Loma all the way to Kaufman and do pressure washing of every single one of those planters and all the sidewalks. And you can tell, you can tell a bit of the difference there.
So all 128 have been cleaned?
All 128 have been cleaned.
With different results, so correct? When I drive down Las Tunas, I don't see a lot of those white ones on the right. Are they, are they all pretty much that way now, or?
I think it's, there's differentiation in terms of how well they, how well they were cleaned, in terms of what, what kind of-
So is that, the one on the left doesn't, and then the one on the right, doesn't look like the same planter? Because I don't, the one on the right, I don't see the green pole. Is it just out of the picture, or? I mean, is it really a, is that-
It's a different style.
It looks like a difference in style, and so I don't know, it says before and after, that's not the same planter?
Well, just, I guess this is just a general representation.
I'd like to see what the, what that one before looks like now.
Yeah.
Did it get clean?
I'm sure it did.
It would've been nice to see the same picture, but truly the one of the clean one.
So I just take this as a general representation of what the crew tried to do over the last few days, but just do-
Well, the only reason is bring it up because I've driven down Las Tunas and there seems to be a lot of planters that still have a lot of black on them.
Okay. We'll take a look again.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, I know the guys, the team actually, you know, pressure washed each one. I think there's, there's variations of how clean they, they were, so. The other one is the, the trash cans that we have, the trash receptacles that we have on Las Tunas. We have a couple challenges there. One, again, the infrastructure, the equipment that the city bought before has held very well and hold, it's held together for decades, right? One of the issues though we do have is with open trash bins like this, trash builds. Trash is picked up multiple times a week by our city staff. Even with that, sometimes you'll see overflow trash that we, once we see it, we do try to pick it up. It becomes more challenging. One thought would be, big belly trash cans are one option from, that would be a design issue. But one thing you could do with big belly trash cans that some other agencies around us have done, have done wraps around them, artistic wraps. So one that, one that has it is the City of Alhambra that essentially has a wrap with their logo around it. From a streetscape standpoint, again, and one of our suggestions is actually going to employ the services of a landscape architect as well to help us kind of rethink what we would want to do with that, but that's one option.
Pasadena's done the wraps, I think.
Right. And aesthetically, in terms of the streetscape, to have big bellies by themselves, probably not the best idea. You would want to do something with those, but it's just, just a thought in that part.
How much are those big bellies? Can we help?
I don't know off the top of my head. They're, they're definitely a lot more than the trash receptacles that we have today.
For the picture you had shown of that one, is that a lever at the bottom that you can step to open, or what is that?
I believe so. The, the general idea from a maintenance standpoint, whatever we do, one of the challenges that staff does have from a maintenance standpoint is just that the overstuffing of the, of the, of the trash receptacles. I guess generally what one thought that we have as staff is, if for consideration, we consider something that's enclosed, something that, that from a, from a larger maintenance standpoint, people don't stuff tons of stuff in, that they-
They just pile next to it.
What's that, sir?
They just pile, pile the trash next to it.
That, that, that could be, that could be one of our challenges.
And the other one that involves touching and opening, people just wouldn't use it.
That, that may, that's one of our challenges.
Elsework, so.
Yeah.
I, you know, just one vote here. I like the existing ones, and I understand they're, they're labor-intensive to some degree. But I, I think they fit the city better than something like those, what did you call them, big bellies?
Yes.
Yeah. Just a comment.
Appreciate, appreciate, I appreciate that feedback and something going forward as well.
I thought last time we touched on this item, we talked about checking, making sure all the businesses have a contract with Athens and have big enough trash bins.
Thank you for that follow-up, Councilmember you, yes. And we're, we're continuing to be in the process of that. We, we have, we have the data from Athens at this point. And as part of the business license process and everything else, we'll be checking with those individual businesses as well and providing them with reminders to use the trash bins that they have under, that they have under contract with Athens. And we will make sure that we're checking with the business license as well, that those are in place.
So is there a plastic bag inside those trash cans?
Yes.
The workers just pull it out and put a new plastic bag in?
Yep, that's what the team does.
And how often do they replace those bags?
Right now, it's, it's twice a week that they, they go, they go through that. But we're, one of the ideas that we have that we'd like to discuss further, it would just be a little bit more, in terms of some additional staff time, would be to do a little bit more frequent trash pickup, but also to more frequent pressure washing that we've been, that, similar to what we employed, showing you that change. The other idea is just the, the street poles as well. Some of the street poles, lights are, the foundations and some of the deterioration over time is going to cause some replacement for several of them. Painting them over is just not, just generally not an option. We, for example, we just had one accident that happened near Camilla and Las Tunas where we've had to replace one of those poles. And just the labor intensiveness of actually repainting some of those to the, to the other color, to the original color, took some time. So generally speaking, what, what we would have to do is look at probably replacement of the street lights throughout is one potential option.
Are you saying it's a structural issue, or?
Structurally, structurally, the lighting is fine in terms of repainting, though. The, what we would have to do is, we couldn't, we couldn't repaint, we couldn't paint in place. We'd actually have to, from, from, and we'll double check with our vendors again, but because of the nature of the composition of the material and other things as well, at least, at least preliminarily, we think we, we couldn't paint in place. We'd actually have to do some level of replacement.
So you're saying you can't paint those poles, you can only replace them, or you can take them down, paint them, and put them back?
Yes.
Well, that doesn't make much sense. They're painting my ninth-story building right now, and that isn't going anywhere. I wouldn't imagine how hard it would be to paint a pole. I don't know, I'm not a painter. So the one struck, the one that you said fell down or got knocked over, what did we replace it with? A totally different type of pole, or?
Yeah.
We don't have a stock of these poles somewhere, somewhere, I don't think.
There, there is no stock replacement of our, of these poles. They would have to be, they would have to be a different type of pole.
So what do we put there in place of the one that fell down?
This was, this was just for a traffic signal pole, so.
Oh, it wasn't one of our light poles?
No, it wasn't one of our streetlight poles. But it was, it presented at least anecdotally, a challenge, one of the potential challenges that we have. Not to go backwards, but one of the benefits of looking at the prior plans we had for Las Tunas was to really look at and replacing the entire infrastructure, which was one of the benefits of that old plan, so.
How many poles do we have? Did you have that number on your?
Didn't have, I don't have that number off the, from the, from the survey. Sorry about that, but we can get that for you.
Right.
Yes, sir.
The Stars Program banners, is that our responsibility?
No, well, it-
It seems somewhat sensitive, I don't know.
It is, it is a sensitive topic, but generally, the responsibility of the banners is ours because they're on our, they're on our public asset and the public right of way. There is not a robust replacement program for those banners. So once a banner hits a certain deterioration level, generally it's supposed to be taken down. But there is not, in terms of typical banner programs that you see in other communities where you see a replacement schedule, specific set area, we quite frankly don't have that with the, with the veterans banners that are up and down Las Tunas and other parts of the community. That is something, quite frankly, that would be something to look at. One of the things that you can do in terms of improvements on Las Tunas would be some kind of banner program where you either alternate these, these banners or provide some parameters around them. But yes, it is a sensitive, it has been a sensitive issue, but, and overall, they are our responsibility. Again, we don't have a program with the Blue Star Banner Group that has a replacement schedule or anything like that.
To me, it seems the interest isn't what it once was.
I can't speak to that, Councilmember Viscara. I know we haven't had a lot of replacements or additions in the last few years.
Sharon's retired now. I bumped into her walking and she said that she wasn't involved.
Okay.
So I don't know who is, but that was some time ago.
The other infrastructure that we have is the benches. Again, the city did a good job of selecting very quality benches. One of the things would be just to replace, or again, these, we could try, you know, stripping down, and, and these obviously would be much easier in terms of, in terms of repainting. But they're, the manpower hours to do that is quite significant in terms of our crew to be able to do that. We did purchase, well, the fundraising component did purchase the benches there, near the library, and those run about $1,600 apiece to the, so, and are long-lasting as well. The pavers on Las Tunas, one of the challenges we have, the picture to your left, is what we're having to do with the tree grates over time is really having to either, this one doesn't represent it as well, but what we're having to do is, as the ficus trees grow, what they're doing is they're kind of cutting through some of the tree grates. So the team actually goes out and actually cuts the tree grates so that the trunk of the tree can expand out. Again, the, the pavers themselves, if without the ficus trees are actually, would still be in good shape in many parts, on many parts of Las Tunas. But again, what's happening is the ficus trees, their natural growth kind of pushes outward. So there is some pieces of uplift, uplift that we have with some of the pavers. But also too, each of the irrigation systems that are connected to the pots are about three blocks long. So I, so they, and, and so what's happened over time is some of that irrigation just is old and some of it leaks. So what happens is the ficus trees start to look for those, for that water source and uplift. So where you see kind of, where the ficus tree may be in one location and you see some uplift in the other, is actually the ficus tree looking for that water source. So again, it was nothing structurally that is wrong with the pavers that are out there. They're actually constructed and placed very well. It's just the time and effort that it, over the decades, with the growth of the ficus trees and just the age of infrastructure over time, you just have challenges. One area to think about generally, rather than kind of take this in one large, huge hunk of Loma to Kaufman, which would be quite expansive and quite expensive, would be to look at one section of town, and one of its, which is the, I would call the entryway to the downtown, downtown core, which is Oak Avenue, Cloverly, and Primrose. And part of the reason why to consider that is maybe, I'll, I'll call it a demonstration area for some, for some improvements to see how that would work, is because, because in this area over the next 12 months, you already see it at the corner of Las Tunas and Oak, where the, there is the new facade that's coming in, coming in with the strip mall that's there. But adjacent to that, at Cloverly and Las Tunas, we were having our first mixed-use project on Las Tunas Drive. So one idea would be maybe take that two-block area and see, use that as kind of a demonstration area to maybe, for lack of a better term, dream a little bit and see what kind of streetscape ideas could be possible. Do we remove the planters? Do we do something with our landscaping and green, and maybe look at some enhanced green space? This is also kind of a dead zone in terms of its pedestrian orientation to the buildings that are there. Because you're going to have a mixed-use project at Cloverly and Las Tunas, maybe this is an opportunity to look at this kind of one, two-block section. I call it the, for lack of a term, we'll call it the entryway to the downtown core. This may be that opportunity to say, hey, what, how can we maybe re-envision this a little bit more and not have it as such a costly item going forward? Or just not spending that much money going forward, but having an idea of what could be transformed for the rest of the downtown core, but also see how that would translate. And also too, imagine if maybe there are maybe not streetscape uniformity throughout the downtown core, but maybe there's variations of streetscape opportunities from Loma to Kaufman. And I think maybe to rely on some expertise to, from landscape architects, streetscape architects to help us kind of understand and maybe envision that as well. But this is one idea.
Are you saying on Las Tunas have different areas that look different? Not, not the same like we have now?
To explore that idea as, as a potential, because each part of Las Tunas from Loma to Kaufman, in terms of its land uses, is, is developing a little bit differently. And that's why I point out this sample area, this kind of what could be a demonstration. So over, over the next few years, especially as the mixed-use project at Cloverly and Las Tunas, it'll change the interface, the urban interface for both the pedestrians, but primarily the pedestrians, and as you're driving down Las Tunas. So I'm just looking, say, this may be an opportunity to look at something that could be a little bit different than what we could do elsewhere.
Mr. Cook, could you remind us where the project is?
Sorry, the, the project is right at the corner of Las Tunas and Cloverly.
Yeah, which corner?
Northwest.
Northwest.
Northwest corner where Cloverly Bakery is currently, the area behind it.
Does this one have the, the pointer? Thank you. Thank you, Julian. Okay, sorry, this, it's not working because it's PDF, but I'll point to it real quick. It's right here at this upper section, right where it's Cloverly Bakery, so sorry. Right at the, here's Cloverly, here's Las Tunas, right at the section area.
And that is what?
The development is an L-shaped.
And the, thank you, the development is an L-shaped developments from here down with Cloverly, Cloverly Bakery and the parking remaining.
If I recall, it actually extends into an area that's not shown is.
This is not, probably not the best, we'll, we'll, we'll give you a better map in the future on this one, but it, that map does, should represent kind of the entirety.
Could you remind council?
Thank you, Brian.
From a, from an entitlement permit standpoint, that's already been issued?
That's correct, that, that.
Yes, the, the land use entitlements, the land use entitlements have been approved. The building is in building plan check right now, so the permits have not been issued.
Okay, got it.
That's the section right there.
Scott, when, when is that, when do you think that will be starting?
I would hope that the permit issuance would be within the next six months.
Thank you.
So one of the ideas is how, how, what, one of the ideas that David Goodell came up with on that intersection was probably providing a little bit more street furniture, some enhanced green space that you could do with pots around, even in this case, he suggested replacing the existing pots and having more colorful succulents and other things. There's other options that you can look at there and to see what could be possibilities.
Didn't we, in one of our previous discussions, talk about trying to get the merchants on board and take some responsibility for, for furnitures?
That was discussed generally in the past. I did not go beyond a general discussion. That would require what would traditionally called business improvement districts or bids and just, there would be some, it's not impossible, but it is challenging in some areas.
Bids is going to require the majority of merchants agreeing.
There's either, there's, there's two types of bids generally. There's a merchant based bid and there's a property based bid. And usually, a lot of times, most agencies try to go towards a property based bid because, quite frankly, that money is easier to collect. It's either, it's either to capture rather than the in and outs of merchants that may or may be at a space for a period of time and then no longer there and hard to get that level of collection, so.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, I think, I guess you call it uptown Pasadena or downtown Pasadena?
Old, old Pasadena.
Oldtown, Oldtown Pasadena is actually, it was the business improvement district that made the difference from what it was and then what it is now.
Without, I, I actually lived in Old Town and I actually, with my condo, I actually paid into the business improvement district. And yes, it does not, it pays for a clean and green program, a, a crime prevention type of program and security ambassadors, those kind of things, so it provided a level of comprehensive services as well to, you know, and then of, a marketing of Old Town.
Was that the Care Rogues area?
Generally speaking, between if you think the boundaries like Arroyo Parkway to, I think, pass, not pass, a little bit maybe past Pasadena Avenue along Colorado and, and a couple, and several blocks north and south of Colorado. It's been known as kind of the one of the premier and one of the showcase business improvement districts in Southern California for many years.
Is it still in place?
Yes, it is. It's re, and it, it goes through, it goes through a renewal process under a special, several year cycle, so. So with that said, that's just a, our general overview of kind of some thoughts. One of the things we'd like from you tonight is just maybe if you have other thoughts, see if you have, if you have the inclination to create a council ad hoc and we can bring back some additional options and considerations for the council. And one of those options and considerations would be, quite frankly, rather than doing it, doing improvements from Loma all the way to Kaufman, maybe just identifying, we, we as a staff have identified one area that we think may make some sense for, on, for as a, for lack of a better term, demonstration area or some different types of improvements to see how they hold, but would defer to the council for any other further directions or if you'd like to establish an ad hoc.
I personally would like to see an ad hoc established of council members for this.
Well, let's, before, before we get to that, if we can go with questions first and see if there's any public comment and we can, we can get to that. Are there any other further council questions at this time?
Just one question actually from Mr. Ream. I think you, you mentioned a mixed use has already been entitled?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it received its land use entitlements already.
Yeah, because I was thinking, hey, well, I have developed, I helped improve the segment in front of him, but since it's already been approved, so there's no.
Yeah, the conditions are then said.
You cannot go back.
Good thought, sir, but yes.
That's it.
Brian, one other question. How much maintenance takes place on the ficus? How often do they have to be trimmed? Or tend to trim them all the way to the ground?
There's different, there's been different approaches to the ficus tree maintenance, to be quite frank with you. At one time, to see kind of that kind of canopy, there was general maintenance, but not the, not a level of tree trimming schedule that's on like a regular tree trimming schedule, to just kind of see. So quite frankly, our lead tree maintenance worker, Jesus, takes kind of like inventory of the, of the trees and makes some determination. Most recently, he did, in the last year, they've done some trimming back of the canopy to help with its growth and help with the crown of the, of the tree and, because he was worried about some of the uplift that he was seeing in parts of it, so right now, it's really kind of attention to detail in terms of the individual trees and what they need, rather than kind of on a traditional, here's the grid, it's on a four year cycle and we're doing every single one of them.
I remember once upon a time where a lot of, no, I don't know, a significant number of merchants were upset because their, their frontage was obscured. You couldn't see their signs.
And we've trimmed some of that back most recently too, and Jesus has taken the opportunity to kind of do that, but again, because of some of the challenges we have with some of those trees. And I think it, it leads to the point of something that Mr. Reamers and I have talked about as well and he kind of reminds me about is the terms, that urban interface, the greening of, of Las Tunas. However, we would do that with more enhanced landscaping, maybe taking some opportunities to relook at the pavers and other things as well may give us some opportunity for, to rethink parts of Las Tunas, the interface between pedestrians and how they interact with the sidewalks, because again, one of the things you wanted to do in the prior projects was really create that sense of place for the pedestrian to be. With the existing infrastructure and the, for lack of a term, the real estate that you have on that sidewalk makes it really challenging because you can't expand, we're not going to expand, but you're taking your existing curb width and trying to make it something interesting and inviting for pedestrians to go up and down. So that's, I think that's going to be one of the challenges that we have. And one of the ideas that we have is like, maybe we take a couple block section, identify the block that we have and see what kind of options or opportunities there may be for that section of town and how that relates to the rest of the downtown. How does that transition to the rest of the downtown? Does the downtown, does each section of downtown have to be alike? That's, I think, some of the questions we'd like to pose and explore as we make some needed improvements to our downtown and, and the Las Tunas corridor.
Any other council questions?
I'm assuming we don't have any cost analysis on any of this stuff, right?
Well, if you take, I mean, if you were just to take.
Well, no, but I mean, they've already mentioned a couple of things, paint, paint the benches, do some with trash cans. Do we have any kind of figures or numbers or what any of this is going to cost us?
Generally speaking, in terms of, again, that's why we suggest maybe looking at this in sections as well, but if you were to do, if you were to do Kaufman to Loma, you're talking about, you know, several hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements.
But it depends on the type of improvements you're going to do. Wouldn't it be, make more sense to me to make less improvements and cover the entire Las Tunas than take a block at a time? Because this still called demonstration area, that'll probably take a year to get done. In the meantime, the rest of Las Tunas is looking, will look terrible and will continue to do so for who knows how long until we decide again, okay, what's the next block we're going to do? So we're already 10, 12 years down the road and we haven't even finished Las Tunas. I mean, the situation's not going to improve. You know, we've talked about getting an ad hoc committee going, fine, let's do that, at least something that'll push this along, because there's nothing in this report tonight that tells me anything that I don't already know. I know we have bad trash cans. I know we have benches that need painting. I know we have light poles that need painting. We talked about this how many years ago? And I remember at the time, it was like, oh my God, that's going to cost way too much to paint all those poles. Well, now, they haven't been painted, we're 10 years down the road and we have some light poles that are even damaged. There's some that are actually falling apart. If you look at the base, some that have, that are just torn apart at the bottom. So, you know, here we sit after these many years and not one thing has been done to, to Las Tunas. So, you know, we need, we need to do something and I think, you know, what's that, what's that old saying? You can only make a first, first impression once. Well, anybody who's driving down Las Tunas, whether they're going east or west, is going to see Temple City and say, well, it's not, this city doesn't look very nice, even though we know that that's not reflective of the city as a whole, but Las Tunas is the main corridor. That's what everybody goes down. That's what they're going to remember.
All right, well, if there's no other questions, we'll open the public comments. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment. I guess we, I know Mayor Protem, you had probably segued into your comments. Do you have anything else? And Councilmember Sterkis, you mentioned a desire to establish an ad hoc. Any other comments?
Yeah, I, I think I'm just frustrated that we're still at this point. So I think having a council ad hoc at least would, I think we all know what hasn't worked in the past and with the road diet and all those A, B, C selection and how the community responded. So I think maybe just putting our heads together and bringing something back to the full council might be helpful.
And I guess, since we're in discussion, maybe get a sense of, like, I think Mayor Protem, you made it pretty clear. Your perspective is you do the whole thing or you don't do it by sections. That's what I'm hearing.
Well, I, I just don't see the advantage of doing it in sections. You're going to spend a lot of money and have a couple of blocks that look real nice, but yet you have another couple of miles that don't look so nice. What's the purpose of that? I don't see it. I mean, I would rather do less on the whole rather than more on one section.
Okay, and I think that's.
I mean, to me, that just makes a better, better use of our money, it seems like to me. I mean, there's some pretty low hanging fruit, fruit here that we can do. I mean, with either the benches, the trash receptacles, I mean, we've already shown that we can clean up those planters. So those are the kind of things I think that, that people will appreciate and see. You know, as far as the sidewalks and the pavers, unless there's a dangerous area, I don't see any reason to even mess with that. I mean, you know, people are going to walk on it as long as it's walkable and, and safe. I don't see any reason to change it at this point. That's, that's when we're getting into the big bucks, you know, so.
So Councilmember Sterkis, is, is that your sentiment as well in terms of the scale of what we should be considering?
I was going to save this for later on, but just as an example, the landscaping around the old, as we call it, the old Alpha Beta site, I mean, has made a huge difference and it's, it's subtle. I mean, they put up a, a nice wrought iron fence and they've planted greenery around there. I mean, I walk there now and I think, I don't even look at the mess anymore, of just a vacant lot. And it was, it was subtle, small improvements. I much prefer that than doing something grandiose on two blocks and then having the rest just be hum, you know, ho-hum. And, and I think one of the reasons is, is because this has taken so long. I think we can't afford from a public perception to just do a small section and then everybody's going to say, well, what happened to the rest?
Okay. Councilmember, you?
I, I think we have actually started this process some years ago and I'd like to revisit, revisit those plans. But I, I really think that in addition to resetting up the ad hoc committee or maybe even a standing committee, that we should bring in, like Mr. Cook has said, either a landscape architect or an architect to help us guide us through this and explore different options. Because I don't know if you remember last time when David Goodell presented his schemes to us. Actually, they were like, it was a low cost option, but there was pretty high and I thought, and I can't remember the number, but I do think it was in the millions.
Yes.
The high, the high number and, and that's why we kind of said that, well, we're going to table that for a while and then bring this back, but although we never brought it back unfortunately.
Well, that was 2017.
Yeah.
And then 2019, 2020, he had COVID, so.
Right, right, right.
Stopping a lot of that kind of stuff.
But, but I would tend to agree with Mayor Protem and Councilmember Sterkis that if we're going to do it, I would say we'll do the entire strip. And the other one, if we were going to do it just unlimited, I definitely would not pick that one corner. I would pick something more centered to, to downtown where the most intensified improvement would be. And then maybe a lesser amount towards the outside, because I think we really do recognize which is the core, the downtown core. And then also, I personally anyways, unless you have a theme that runs across the entire Las Tunas that would help you decide which sort of thematic improvements, I would say that it needs to have a certain characteristic, certain signature, Temple City look, our own branding, if you will. So I, I think it should be the sort of uniform and should be of the same type of street furniture, same, same kind of design. Maybe now, maybe in an opportunity though, also to bring in some civic art. It may be a great opportunity to again, partner with our high schools to bring some, or local artists to, to bring some improvements.
Well, we certainly know we have some very talented artists.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, exactly.
Look, Councilmember, you, you mentioned intense use, so where, where would that be?
I would say it's, it's close to where City Hall is.
Yeah, I'm saying three blocks on each side of City, I mean, three blocks on each side of Temple City Boulevard.
Yeah, 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 I agree.
That's, to me, that's the downtown core.
Which would actually include the segment that Mr. Cook mentioned.
Well, kind of on, not really. I mean, I guess you go from Temple City, Temple City West would be what, Primrose first? And then Camelia, no, Camellia.
No, Camellia's east.
Oh, Camellia's east.
Yeah, maybe Primrose, Cloverly, Oak.
I would, well, then I would revive, I would say everything east of Ralph's. You know, that's where I would go.
Okay.
But.
I guess my, my only comment is I, I would go back to what Mr. Cook said is. I guess my, my only comment is I, I would go back to what Mr. Cook said is, I think we need to understand how the downtown land use is changing and challenge the notion that the traditional downtown core still exists. That's just my comment. Anyway, um-
But see, we're not really changing downtown, we're just changing what Las Tunas looks like.
Right, but the Las Tunas has a direct nexus into the use.
But do we really have a downtown? I mean, if you really wanted to say we had a downtown, I would say Roseweed and Las Tunas is where everybody goes now. That's where the restaurants are. But where else do they go?
But things are changing also. We're going to have mixed use coming in. I don't know what the heck's happening with, with Ralph's.
Well, I, I mean, the mixed use is fine, but if you go to Pasadena, mixed use has not done well there. I mean, there's a lot of empty mixed use places in Pasadena right now. So, how well it works in Temple City remains to be seen, but I don't think I'd hold my hat on that entirely.
Have you been to the 85 degree in, in Arcadia on Jordi?
No, I don't go there.
Oh, that's a great place.
Well, I'm not saying it doesn't work.
It works.
Well, yeah, but I'm just saying as a whole, mixed use is not the great thing in the world that it used to be, okay? Just ask Pasadena then. I think maybe they overdid it perhaps, is what their problem was.
Like the Mestalla?
Well, just the, the whole city was turned into mixed use, but, I mean, I, I'm, I'm hoping that, that ours works, of course, and it would be great if it does. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but, you know, I wouldn't exact, like to say it's going to be the end-all of everything, so.
Well, according to HCD, we need a lot more units.
Well, yeah, well, we always do, but.
Yeah.
All right, Councilmember Viscara, what do you think?
Well, we keep talking about all these different things and I think they're probably best, that discussion is probably best saved for, for a separate committee to, to go over.
But your, your, your opinion is all or nothing in terms of the stretch?
Not, not really. I mean, I, I'm open.
Okay.
But, but I'd like to have some intelligent discussion on, not here, but in a separate committee.
Sure.
And, and the one idea you've had, because I've used them before, is to have an architect, a landscape architect on board to, to help guide us.
Sounds good. All right, yeah, no, that, that's a, no, it's, I think we all feel frustrated because it seems like deja vu when we keep talking about these. I mean, you're, you're bringing up images and, and items from a 2017 discussion, which I'm sure all of us still remember. So I, I concur with the establishment of an ad hoc to at least get us started. I would ask that the ad hoc consider the different options because we speak as if we already know what these improvements are going to look like. But to Councilmember Usepoint, if you bring in a landscape architect or someone else, they might show you ideas that none of us have ever, ever even thought of. And at least to Mr. Cook, your segment about a segment of downtown, I, I find that interesting. Now, obviously, I defer to council for a final say on that. What I would suggest is we can actually look at both. You can look at a possibility of improving everything that Mayor Protem Chavez has alluded to, but you can also look at the segment that you brought up, maybe from a staff standpoint or whatnot, and say, kind of what Councilmember you said, is, is there a more intense use in the center that then tapers out but is still thematically consistent? I don't know. I don't know. But, but it, it piques my interest. And then I'm also curious about the segment from Loma to Kaufman. I mean, if we're going to talk about the whole thing, well, what about the area west of Loma?
But see, that's the problem when you start going to do segments. Some, somebody who has a business in the segment you're not doing is going to say, hey, what about us? What are we, the black sheep of the family? Like, we're not getting the improvements. And when are we going to get those improvements? I know that's what's going to happen, you know, and how long is that going to take? So that's why I'm saying to, to segment, to do it segment by segment, yeah, if you have a plan, we're going to do this segment this six months, we're going to do the next segment this six months, that might work, but to say, well, let's just do a, a two or three block area and see what it looks like, and then with no additional plan, that makes no sense.
Yeah, I'm saying it, it's not a binary thing. I think Las Tunas should be a, a fluid and dynamic situation. And again, to Councilmember Usepoint, I, I do remember some of those cost estimates being pretty high when we, I remember we, the way you described it at that time, Mr. Cook, was you called it the à la carte option, right? You pick, pick and choose the different improvements, and the moment you picked all of them from city limit to city limit, all of a sudden, we're talking about millions of dollars of improvements and we don't have the same type of money that we had for the, for the previous go around. There's no Metro grant that we can tap into, right? So, so I, I would, I, I concur with the establishment of the ad hoc, which we will, Mr. Murphy, should we do that as part of this item or should we wait till the end of item 13 to do that?
I think doing it now is, is acceptable. Thank you, sir.
Okay. So, our, the last time we had a standing committee for this, it consisted of Councilmember you and Mayor Protem Chavez. As a courtesy, I would extend that to you, both of you, again, if you're willing to do it. Councilmember you, Mayor Protem Chavez, would you like to be?
Well, I mean, I've already been put on the last two ad hoc committee, meeting committees, but I certainly would defer to, to the three.
I, I would love to, to help out if I can.
Okay. What about Councilmember Viscara?
I would love to, but how many people do we have on the committee?
Just two.
Okay, well, then, if I hear correctly, I will establish it with Councilmember you and Councilmember Viscara? Is that, is that okay with you?
Yeah, it's all got to come back to us sooner or later anyway.
Okay. All right, so we hereby establish that ad hoc committee. And Mr. Murphy, I ask that you inform us or advise us when an ad hoc becomes a standing or should become a standing, and we'll take that. I know that's been an issue in the past, but for now, since this is still a fluid motion, I presume an ad hoc is okay.
An, an ad hoc is okay. Right now, we're, you're, it's a special purpose and it's a limited period of time, and that's what an ad hoc's supposed to be. Standing would be if, say that you had a business improvement district and you had a standing committee to interface with that business improvement district. That's standing. This is ad hoc because we're looking at a very specific thing, what kinds of public improvements are we looking at? An ad hoc will probably work for this entire project, but if the project starts to run over a year, then I'm going to suggest to you, sir, you're, the new mayor at that point, a year from now, that we, we transition to standing at that point, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
All right, sounds good. Then, um-
Can we, Mayor, can we pick a, a timeframe in which the ad hoc will come back and report? Because I'm afraid if we, we don't put those time constraints in, we'll be seven months and the group's not going to meet.
That's a good point. Now, Mr. Cook, considering we do have budget season coming up, what is your best take as to how we can fill this? I mean, it obviously will depend on the committee's individual schedules as well, but I think we should at least set a, a ballpark.
I'd like to get the first meeting just so that we can establish maybe landscape architect and everything by the, the end of July and then report back to the council at the end of August.
Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Reasonable? Okay.
Wait, that's three months from now. It's going to take three months to report back?
Well, between-
Because we'll still need to get a report from the consultant.
Yes.
Which is going to delay that more.
Time goes fast.
All right, well, let's just put it this way. Every council meeting, we're going to ask you when, when, when the ad hoc's going to meet until we finally nail a date down.
Sounds good. And we'll come on, but we'll more depend on time.
We will, we will agendize that and put it as part of your city manager's update.
Sounds good.
All right.
That's all I need from the report, sir.
All right, so we don't need a council motion then, do we?
Thank you.
Yeah, but Mayor, I was just thinking while you were asking those questions, when we should come back. I, I think one way is to wait for us to bring in an architect or landscape architect to advise the ad hoc. The other one could be, I was just thinking that the ad hoc could also meet and with staff and we maybe accept some criteria, some criteria whereby we might look for the, what, what quality we look for in the architect and, and may, and I don't know what it is going to be under the city manager's, probably not delegate authority, so we may have to send out a solicitation and maybe the ad hoc can help establish the cri, uh, selection criteria. I'm just thinking in my mind.
I, I wouldn't want to go into any discussion about who, in, in individuals. I think to Councilmember Usepoint, I think it may be a good idea to, from the ad hoc, to get some of like the parameters-
Yeah.
And skill sets that we're looking for and, and in terms of that professional service and then kind of go out.
Well, and I'll give you an example. When we hired Goodell, he came back with streetscape changes, a road diet, I mean, it was a whole laundry list of things, and that's why it got into the millions of dollars. For want of a better term, I think at this point, given how much we have to spend, we're really more or less talking to more of a beautification of Las Tunas than a substantive change of the, of the road and the street, aren't we?
Exactly. I think Mayor Protem, I think that's really my point, was whether or not we actually need to have the architect here or would the ad hoc can work with staff perhaps and even bring back interim report to look at different options at a very high level because you can dream all your, all the dreams you want, but if, if we don't have funds. So perhaps one of the things we actually need to look at is what, what kind of monies are we looking for? And maybe that would be something to be considered in the budget session.
Right, I, yeah, and, and to, to your point, Councilmember you, I think that's where the timing's a little tricky because we obviously have the budget study coming up. And I think there's a lot of assumptions about what this is going to consist of and how that translates into how we appropriate funds for this, right? So you can, like the staff report mentions the landscape maintenance district as one source, but there's other sources like ARPA, there's reserves if we want to go that route. So, so really, there's a, a lot of options, but perhaps the ad hoc can really nail it down for us. I, I actually agree with Mayor Protem, that's, do we, is the architect really necessary? Is it a precursor to the ad hoc meeting or can the ad hoc just meet first and iron it out?
I would believe the ad hoc can meet first because we need to kind of define the scope for the architect, whether it's a million dollar project or it's 10 million or 100 million dollar project. I mean, different architects can respond to different, different parameters. I don't think that's-
Well, and then also even, I mean, let's say your recommendation at the ad hoc is to go after landscape, but at the end of the day, we still have to approve the expenditure of the ones.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
So, I think we should, I agree, I think we should, ad hoc should look at the overall picture, meet with staff, maybe get a better idea of kind of what direction it looks like to someone we want to go and then report back.
And report back, yes.
Okay, do we need to go this route or that route?
All right. So what, what I would suggest or propose to the ad hoc is try to find a time to meet in, in June using the information we already have. Because there's, there's a lot of existing information.
Right, yeah, yeah, rest of our information that we have.
And do we still have that Goodell report sitting on some shelf somewhere, I'm assuming?
We do somewhere, yes.
Gathering dust? Maybe you want to pull that back out and there might be some good ideas in there?
Sounds good.
All right, well, we'll defer to the ad hoc to schedule with the city manager.
Yeah, we don't have the plaza staying ground again, but.
Yeah, okay. All right, then we'll, we will move on to the next item then, if there's no other comments. Update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Mann, members of the council. Considering the hour, just real quickly, we do have a budget study session this coming We, as a city, we are in, we've recovered well from COVID and we have a good baseline to move forward from. You have some interesting decisions to make during the budget process, but we look forward to the deliberations with you next week and the subsequent sub-budget public hearings that come thereafter. So, thank you, sir.
All right, update from our city attorney?
Uh, no report tonight, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next, council reports on ad hoc or standing committee meetings. I know there's at least two to report. Maybe the first one, maybe I'll ask-
Mayor Mann, I will report out on our commissioner recruitment ad hoc committee.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Councilmember Viscar and I were part of that ad hoc committee. As the council may know, we received 10 applications for this round of commissioner recruitment. There were a total of nine seats to fill, three on each of the commissions. The nine commissioners who were termed out, for want of a better term, have all indicated a desire to, to stay on or be reappointed. We did conduct a separate interview on May 11th. After the finish of that interview, and Councilmember Viscar certainly chime in on this, it would be our recommendation that we reappoint the commissioners whose terms are expiring, I believe it's next month. So that would be a recommendation to council, which then, of course, would need to be agendized for a future meeting.
Any-
That was your master's.
Agendize, okay. Then if there are no objections from council, then we can agendize that for the next, next meeting? All right.
Do we, do we motion it now?
I think that's just a recommendation.
It'll come back as a proper agenda item, just a report tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Were there any questions?
Yeah, no, okay. And Mayor Protem, would you mind reporting out on the centennial?
Sure, okay, well, just a brief report. Adam Matsumoto has met with Mayor Mann and I on the centennial celebration ad hoc committee. Want to thank him. Unfortunately, he can't be here tonight for his information. I just wanted to share with council some of the things that were discussed. We did hear some of the things tonight from Mary, but there are some programs, some events that have been confirmed. One, of course, as you know, the city is working with the Temple City Historical Society and Temple City Unified School District. One of those items, which is stated, slated for May 26th, Temple City, all the Temple City schools will be celebrating the centennial by dressing up in 100-year-old attire, which sounds like a great idea. So I'm sure Jerry will take many photos for us. You're going to be, it's going to be a busy day for you, Jerry. So that's one thing. Of course, we all heard about the barbecue on May 28th. There is a scavenger hunt that's apparently been scheduled for July 9th. That is, again, through the Historical Society, more details will follow on that. And the Historical Society is also developing centennial merchandise to be purchased on their website. More on that in a, in a minute, but we'll, we'll get some more information on that as well. As far as proposed centennial celebrations, there's been a discussion and I think agreement on having presence in our Concerts in the Park series. Not every concert, but at some of the concerts in the park, there will be information booths, well, there will actually be an information booth at each concert date, but then there'll also be some separate events, kind of every two to three weeks at the Concerts in the Park. And so more information as we get closer on that as well. The big centennial celebration, or at least so far, is going to be partnered with the Historical Society and the Temple City Unified School District, which is generally kind of our fall festival and car show, as you may know. So that usually draws a large audience, and so we thought it would be a good idea to kind of partner with that. That date is set for September 30th. We don't have the timeline or the details yet, but of course, that'll be worked out and more information will follow on that as well. One of the things that they do, are thinking of adding to that is possible parade, shorter parade than probably the Camellia Festival Parade, but kind of from, they talk about from Cloverly to Temple City Park and allow course entries. And then, of course, as we know, this year's Camellia Parade got rained out, so we're hoping to give them the opportunity, or some of them, to be in that parade, to give that, get that thing as well. And then, of course, having centennial activities in the park during that day, so, and that'll be right here at Temple City Park. So I think that, that'll probably be the- be right here at Temple City Park, so I think that, that'll probably be the, the big event so far that's on the calendar. They are looking for some centennial branding ideas, and so if anybody has any branding ideas, I would suggest you get ahold of Adam, let him know, some of the things that were discussed were possible street banners on Rosemead Boulevard, some Temple City Park light pole banners, right here in the park, right outside here, of course, some centennial promotional items such as pins, coins, shirts, normal stuff that we would have, and one of the things that was discussed is maybe getting those promotional items and maybe raffling them off at some of the concerts in the park, so, you know, to give people the opportunity to, to win some of those things. There's been some talk about a city hall display, both indoor and outdoor, with some of the historical photos and information, maybe a timeline, maybe perhaps putting together, and Fernando may want to look into this, large outdoor centennial mural, similar to the mural that we did for the library, as you can remember, one of the things that was brought up was, as you recall, the mural that used to be on the library wall did have some historical aspects to it, we had, remember the trolley car, astronaut, Steve Lindsay, so there were some historical things, I think Jerry, Jerry's Wonder Cleaners was featured on there? So, we're thinking, and that's just stored here at the yard, I believe, so some of those things that we could probably bring back, and so, one of the suggestions that was made also is to outreach to the Homestead Museum, as you know, they have a lot of historical information, and their, last time I spoke with the director over there, he was more than willing to, to help out and participate in whatever events we may have, and so, a lot of stuff on the table, now, one of the nice things is that even though the hundred year anniversary is this month, this is sent, meant to be a one-year celebration, so basically starting this month till next year, we'll have the opportunity to put a lot of these events to go together.
And then we can have another big party at the end.
We can always have parties, yes, parties are always nice, we're even trying to arrange maybe a, a night at Dodger Stadium for Mayor Mann to throw out the first pitch, maybe, I don't know, he's gonna start working on his arm a little bit, we don't want him to bounce it to home plate, but, you know, so that's, that's one of those pie in the sky things, but, any ideas, I mean, they're all open, Adam's looking for ideas right now, and they're doing a great job, though, and they're working with a lot of different people. I think the takeaway from this meeting, as we discussed, this is our opportunity for the council to at least a little, be a little bit more involved through the ad hoc committee, report back, and then, of course, encourage others to, if you have any ideas, let us know, and we'll be glad to, to share those with them.
And to get involved.
Yep, yep, and, you know, like I said, Historic Society has taken a great lead on it, but, you know, there's only so much they can do, obviously, we can carry the heavyweight, so to speak, on some of these things, and so, look forward to it, so it's gonna be a good year, good year, good exciting year, that's all I have, unless you have anything else?
No, that was, you covered it all, and I, I just want to do a shout out to Director Adam Matsumoto, he really carried that, that meeting really well, had a lot of great information, and of course, all our collaborative partners in this process, we appreciate their, their help and support. All right, next, we do have one more report on the future develop, sorry, not the future, Facilities, Public Works and Infrastructure Standing Committee, that council member you and I are part of.
Yeah, I think Mayor allowed me to report out, so Mayor Mann and I met with city staff, city manager, and our city engineer on an update of the pavement management plan, and we look at different options, and look at what we've done in the past, and what we plan to do in the future, in, in consideration of the new city budget that's coming up, we're looking at a potentially innovative way of stretching our dollars by doing pavement improvement that doesn't involve replacing the entire pavement, so, we have not made a decision yet, and the, the group is supposed to meet again to make a recommendation back to the city council, and perhaps Mayor Mann can add to what I just said.
No, I think that, that pretty, that's a pretty good summary, but I, I do want to say it was a, a great work by TransTech to bring us these ideas, as we know, we've talked about this at various meetings over the year, there's only so much money that goes around to roads, and we hear, we hear everyone, residents who complain and say, hey, when's my road gonna be fixed, so, we are trying to see if we can stretch the budget a little bit, but again, with a city of, of our size and our budget, there, there is a, there is a certain limit to what we're able to accomplish, so, we will be meeting again at the end of the month, as, as the, as the standing committee meeting, and hopefully by a time we'll have enough information to recommend a, a project to council.
Prelimarily, we're looking at, with, even with the previous pavement improvements, we're looking at improving close to sixty percent of the entire city, right, so, that's a pretty impressive number, except that, that we're pretty much used to all the fundings available and the grants and other special funding, so, we'll be reporting out on what we recommend to the council.
Do we have a pavement schedule? So, because I know, like, sometimes I get questions from people who live, let's say, on so-and-so street, well, when's my street gonna get paved? Do, do, can we answer that question, or?
That is something we actually discussed with, with the ad hoc, so generally, we don't have a street-by-street schedule of when a street is going to be repaid, but one of the things that Mayor Mann and council member you, we discussed with them, is taking an alternative approach to some of the streets that may have not been done for many years, and stretching those dollars to do that, so, is there a grid, there's like a schedule that goes, you know, one through a hundred of every single street, no, there's not, but we're looking at an approach that addresses some of the concerns that you've heard about my street has not been done for twenty-five years.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, especially since there have been streets in the city that have been done two or three times in that period, where another street has never had it done at all.
Right.
So, that, that seems to be the problem a little bit, but I, I always remind people too, is that if you have a particular problem or there's, you know, a hole in your street, the city has been pretty responsive as far as going out there and do what they can to patch those things up, and then, of course, that, that's a Band-Aid at this point, but it was better than nothing.
Yeah, but, but actually, surprisingly, maybe Mayor Mann can explain that from any junior point of view, it's important that we patch up the potholes, because they are, you know, a source of water infiltration into the pavement, so we encourage people, folks, to actually report, if you see a pothole, don't, don't hesitate to let us know, let the city, let the city manager or city staff know, if you see something major, because staff may or may not have noticed it.
And also to Mayor Protem's point, one, one thing that was interesting that I wasn't fully aware of was that we, we do log every single resident complaint or comment about roads, and our city engineer, I mean, they look at the engineering first, but they also consider, you know, where these, where the complaints are, where, and see if there's a way to, to kind of make it all work, it doesn't always work that way, but it is being considered as part of.
And I appreciate the staff, work staff does, I think, I think, and personally, we're, we're pretty responsive to those type of complaints, and, and have been for a while, and, you know, sometimes people just like to complain, and, but they don't get to complain to the right place, you know, so that somebody can take care of it, and I would urge them not to hesitate to contact city hall, and it'll be taken care of.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask, Brian, the, what was it, ma- measure funds that we sold to Foothill Transit, it wasn't A, what, what, what were they?
They were actually, they were A, so they, yeah, so there, there were, they were funds that we could not put towards roads.
Okay, so, that's still the case, you can, we cannot sell them and put them.
Yeah, no, we can't, we, we could sell, you could, the council could sell them, again, your excess funds, but the, the, what, that helped us out in fiscal year twenty twenty-one during COVID was we had a gap, and that, that, that sale of that Prop A funds, which they were about to expire as well, but they cannot go towards repaving roads, Prop C does, but Prop C is restricted, very restricted to roads that have transit routes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think that does it for the reports, we'll go to items separate from the regular agenda, council member Sturquist?
Yes, you know, it, for some reason, I thought that we had a liaison to the San Gabriel Humane Society, and I thought it was me, but does anybody remember who that was?
I think it's me.
Is it you? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, but.
Do you want, do you want to be the liaison?
No, 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 but what I wanted to say was, it's been a long time since I have been to the San Gabriel Humane Society, and recently, my son adopted a, a dog last week, and I have to tell you, from the time that I had been to the Humane Society, which was maybe five years ago compared to now, was a huge difference, I mean, they have this beautiful play yard with fiberglass pools for the dogs can run and play in the water when it's warm, the process was so different from the time that I adopted a rescue dog before for them, they only take appointments, which is really nice for the animals, so that people aren't just always going back and forth, and the animals are upset, and there's all this barking going on, you, you go to this area where you meet the dog that you're interested in, and they're all online, which is really nice, and they have a nice biography on each dog, and, and then they take you back there, and you can stay half an hour, longer if you'd like, you can see other dogs interact with the dog that you're interested in, but it was such an efficient process, and I was just so pleased with the service, I mean, they are very careful about to whom they adopt the dogs out to, and, and so I, I think that they're doing a really great job of trying to do better than when we had some concerns in the past, so I think the process was great, I mean, they even called a couple days later to check and see how the dog was doing, if we had any health con, concerns about the dog, we could take it to a vet, so I just want to encourage people that if you're looking for a pet, to, to take a look at the San Gabriel Humane Society and see the animals are there, just by a fluke today, something popped up on my news feed, and it was, someone had posted, I think it was on Nextdoor, and they had a sign at the Baldwin Park, LA County Shelters, and it said, if you surrender your dog, we want you to know that it will be immediately euthanized, and.
I don't think so, but.
And then people responded and said, well, I went to an LA County Shelter, and the same sign was posted there, and they had a posting of the sign, and I, I know Catherine Barker has worked so hard with the LA County Shelters to try and get dogs adopted, but I guess they're so impacted right now, there's four dogs into a kennel, so if anybody's interested in a pet, please take a look at shelters before you, take a look at backyard breeders, and see if you can adopt a, a rescue pet, I don't know how true that is, but it's what was being posted today about the shelters, they're just overly impacted.
I know, I remember when we were looking at changing shelters, or looking at, Baldwin Park, if I remember correctly, was what is referred to as a kill shelter, they, they do, they only hold them so long, and then they have to euthanize them, but not all shelters are like that, but I believe they were, now whether they still are or not, I don't know, but I think San Gabriel's under new management too, aren't they?
You know, I don't know about.
Because I don't think Sidney Rigney is.
She's still there, she's still, she's still in.
Because we never hear, we never hear from them anymore.
That'll be coming, that, 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 go ahead, Scott.
She, she used to come, she stopped coming, one, because of COVID, and then, secondly, they, they have an overpopulation of large animals, and they're very hard to bring in, to share with you, so usually she would, used to bring in smaller animals, but she will, the contract for the San Gabriel LA Humane Society will be here on June sixth, so you'll have that option, yeah, she's still there, yeah.
Do you know anything about the LA County Shelters?
I, I don't, no, I was just looking it up as you were talking about it.
Yeah, so, anyway, I, it was just a great experience, the dog is wonderful, and we're, he's very happy with her, so.
I, I think statistically, I think you, they have, they are bound by law to hold animals for so long, at least a minimum amount, so, it's not true that they would, they will be euthanized the same day, that's.
No, I don't think it's the same day.
Yeah, I think, I think it might be a sign to get people's attention, because so many people are just bringing in dogs and dumping them.
Right, right, right.
Thanks for sharing, my, my first dog was from the same, San Gabriel Humane Society.
Would you like another?
I think I already have two boys who behave like dogs at home.
Oh, no.
I adopted my cat from San Gabriel.
Did you, would you like another?
No, I think one is plenty, they, they don't play well with other cats.
I think Hilianna's dog needs a, a playmate.
All right, thank you, council member Sturquist.
And that's all, thank you.
Council member Viskar?
Um, Tuesday, Tuesday, last night, I went to the temple here in Temple City, and the, the council general for Israel was there, and he spoke, made a presentation, really interesting, and I'm kind of a Middle East buff anyway, and I read all the novels and the spy novels and all that, that apply to that area, so I was fascinated by, by how this guy spoke, and he, he explained the, it was all focused on Judeaism, and he was explaining the politics in, in, in Israel, how it works, how it affects us, how, what's happening with Iran and, and Russia and, and all the other areas, and he brought it all together, because he, he lives it, and, and the council general is equivalent to an ambassador, but because of the number that they have to have, they call them council generals, you can only have one ambassador to the United States from Israel, anyway, he gave explanations of all that, I, I was, I was fascinated by it, he spoke for about two hours, and I went like that, so, it just kind of widened my horizons, and anybody else that was there, anytime there's a chance to, to go hear a presentation like that, I would recommend, especially if it's happening.
How did you hear about that, I didn't know that there was somebody there.
On my email, from Brian.
From Brian, you sent him an email thing?
No, I think they, they, I believe they reached out to, they did email me about that, and, and on our last meeting, we did have, on the consent calendar, they were actually the ones that requested that we do a resolution condemning antisemitism.
I'm just kidding, Brian.
So, yeah, that, it's, I thought that was interesting, that of all places, they would come here.
Well, you, you know how that got on our agenda, right? I reached out to Brian because my law partner knows the guy who's doing that, and called me and asked me if we would consider doing it, so that's when I asked Brian if he would mind getting that on the agenda, and that's how it got on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Jason, what was Jason's last name?
Oh, Brian.
Nice guy, but yeah, he, yeah, he, he knows, he knows my law partner very well, my law partner's Jewish, and he, he knows him, and so, yeah, he had reached out, hey, can Temple City think about doing this? Yeah, sure, yeah, so, hopefully, I was trying to get him, I think he was gonna try to make it to that meeting, but I think he had some previous engagement, he said he would try to come out to the next, maybe another meeting.
They were nice enough to, to recognize me as being, representing the city, and they mentioned the city council.
Good.
Yeah, on, on that note, actually, World Journal picked up on our passing of the resolution to actually interview Mayor Mann, and to talk about racial harmony, and perhaps you can touch on it a little bit, to what you said, they have a nice article in, in World Journal, the Chinese paper, talking about us passing that in our council meeting.
Yeah, it was, actually, thank you, I forgot about that, thank, thank you for bringing it up, it's, yeah, I wasn't expecting it, because they, they called me and, and said, oh, can we, at first, I didn't know what they were talking about, because they, they weren't specific about the antisemitism resolution, they called it something else, and so I got a little confused, then she said, oh, you have it on your consent calendar, I go, uh-oh, there's a consent calendar, I'm, I'm not aware, so I go there, and I realize, okay, she's asking about the, the resolution that we passed last week, and so, we didn't get into a lot of details, but they, they asked about, you know, that there was a lot of focus on the whole.
Hate crime and racial harmony, yeah.
And so they were doing kind of a broader editorial series about that in general, and so that caught their eye, and they say, well, this fits directly into sort of the series that they wanted. And so that caught their eye and they say, well, this fits directly into sort of the series that they want to do. And they just asked, well, can you give us a little bit of background as to how that came about and.
I, I think they're sensitive to, of course, not only the problems in the Asian community, but overall as well. So it's nice that they would expand that.
Yes, so, so they, they, um, so that was very interesting, cause I didn't expect them to, of all things, to ask me about that. But, um, but yeah, in, in general, uh, I think what we discuss is that, you know, we're, we're fortunate to not be really at the center of, of, of attention, nor do we have a lot of incidents that are.
No.
Really catching attention. So in general, um, we, we like, we were able to say, hey, things seem to be going well. Um, it's not.
In our city?
Yeah, in, in Temple City, there is not really a lot of, um, you read about these things in other areas, but generally we, we haven't, lucky, knock on wood, uh, have not experienced that recently, so. So it was all, all in all, a, a, a nice little conversation. But when, um, when I saw the article, I didn't expect them to. I mean, they have a, a local section in the newspaper and it basically, I guess you call it the, the front page of their local section?
Yeah, it's, uh.
So maybe, maybe we could share it with you, I, I have.
Well, you know, I was gonna say.
I send it to Brian, I don't know if you.
Uh, we're getting it translated, I'll give it to you.
Yeah, cause I, I was gonna bring up, it would be nice for, when something like that is in the world's room, because obviously, I don't get it. I wouldn't know about it unless one of you ever mentioned it. We used to be, kind of get, get updates on that and we, that stopped happening. I don't know if somebody, maybe, uh, somebody who's not at Temple City anymore maybe was doing it and now we don't have anybody to do that for.
But typically, uh, Stella's the one that that would catch. Send it to me and I'll send it to Brian and then used to be who, Tiffany?
Uh, Tini.
Who translated, Tini would translate it for us, but now we don't have the translator, so maybe that's why.
Sorry, I didn't get that in time, I'll get it off to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be nice to read those.
Yeah.
Councilmember you, anything?
That, that, that's it, just, uh, just that.
Mayor Protem, anything?
No, just about those articles, it'd be nice to kind of get a heads up on those and it's always nice to hear about Temple City. You know, I, I don't know if you guys saw the news, but there's another mass shooting today.
Oh, really?
I think this was in New Mexico. I, I.
You can see that almost every day.
It, it's getting to that point, isn't it? And I just, you know, you pray to God every day that, you know, you stay away from those type of things, but it just, it, I don't know what to say, it just happens too much, too often and, and there doesn't seem to be any, any, anything to be done about it in, in Washington or even, I mean, California's certainly more progressive as far as gun laws and things like that, but.
California is listed as the number one state for the amount of mass shootings.
Are they?
Yes.
Well.
Who is?
California.
Yeah.
Uh, we have the tightest gun law.
Over Texas?
Yes, for mass shootings. I mean, maybe this changed now, I don't know what the ratio was before.
Well, I don't know, I just, uh.
Cause we have the most people, perhaps.
You know, we, we, we hear from our representatives, you know, so, every once in a while. I just think maybe we need to talk to them more about, uh, making some changes, cause something has to be done. It's just, it's just crazy.
We have the most stringent laws in the country.
We do in California, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but, but we have, we're the most populous state.
Anyway, I don't wanna be a downer, but it's just unfortunate that those things happen.
I didn't know.
I wish we could do something more about it, but, uh, you know, uh, thank you for our, our sheriffs and those who keep us, uh, safe and, and, uh, you know, we're thankful that, uh, we can keep that stuff away from us here.
And wasn't it just a few days before, was it an outlet mall? There was a mass shooting.
Yeah, it's just an outlet mall.
Where, where do you go where you can feel safe? Or let your children go?
It's just too bad. And also, um, there was an incident in our neighborhood.
Yes, you're in.
Uh, it's flying over our house for a couple, a couple of, uh, hours. Saturday night, Saturday night. And, uh, you know, Brian does a pretty good job though, letting us know what's going on, uh, uh, you know, thankful for that. But, uh, you know, it's one of those things.
What was going on?
Uh, apparently there was a, somebody had stolen a car in El Monte and El Monte PD chased him into Temple City, of course.
His house and mine.
Yeah, it was right between our two houses. The guy took off and, uh, he was actually, I guess he abandoned, he abandoned his car at Freer and, or, at Freer and El Monte. And, uh, took off and they eventually found him in a garage somewhere. So, you know, those things happen, but, uh, yeah, you know, it's, uh, it's good that they at least take some action, but.
It's funny, when it was happening, my garage door was open.
Was it?
Yeah, so I went to close it.
Close it, yeah.
I see our deputies on my street at least once daily, so thank you.
Well, your street especially.
My street especially, yes.
That's all, thank you.
Home of the Camellias.
Yes, home of the Camellias.
And, and on that note, uh, remind everyone that Neighborhood Watch is important. And that is happening this Thursday.
Is that at West?
Westminster Presbyterian Church at nine six four two Livo Avenue.
Where is?
Westminster Presbyterian Church.
That's in the street from your house, it's, you can walk there.
Yeah, I'll walk the, the, through there.
There you go.
Yeah. So that's this Thursday, um, we mentioned next Tuesday, we have the budget study session. Next, let me see, there was one more thing I was gonna say, now I forgot.
Contract City?
Oh, yes. So that, the annual Contract Cities Conference is, is this coming weekend, um, I, I will be attending. And I think I might be the only one there.
You'll represent as well.
Yeah.
Do your best.
I, I'm gonna miss, we, I know, uh, Mr. Cook's gonna be our flag bearer.
Oh, great.
Are you really?
Congratulations. There's actually a little ceremony where all the cities with the, they bring out their flags, so.
Don't mess it up.
Do you have your polo shirt?
Oh, I, I remembered, um, I just wanna, a, a shout out to, um, the new dumpling place that opened inside Camellia Square called Ba Fang Dumpling. Um, they had a relatively low-key ribbon-cutting ceremony. I know Councilmember Viscara and I were there, we had a sampling of the food.
Or did we have?
It was very good, um, they're primarily to-go orders, they do have a couple of seats inside, uh, but their business is geared towards a takeout. Highly recommended, check it out when you get a chance.
And the mayor ate as much as I did. No.
Was I, was I, are we keeping? Yes, it was, it was very good food. I, I, I'll say this, it reminded me, it was probably one of the few restaurants that reminded me of what night market food could taste like. Um, although in Tai- so this chain originated from, they have a, a lot of locations in Taiwan and, and Hong Kong and China. Um, they're, they're, it's considered a fast food there. So their menu is very limited, slim, narrow, but it's, it's good. Um, I, I call it the in-and-out menu, where you have a few items, but they do it really well.
Right.
Didn't she say they had fifteen hundred outlets?
She said there was like, uh, over a thousand in Asia. So it's not, this is not some like mom and pop place. So they, they have the formula and the recipes and all that.
You, you check it out then.
Yeah, so, all right. Um, on that note, we move to additional public comments. For those of you, wow, Mr. Jerry Janbaisian, send me a record, it's ten twenty-five, there's public comments.
You have to be up early here.
I'm tired.
Six thirty.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, I'll try to keep this brief, but regarding the, uh, potholes, I, I'm impressed by city staff because there was a pothole on Loma by my store yesterday and I think he got out of the truck, took a picture of the pothole, filled it up with the cold asphalt, got out the compactor, went over it, put it back in the truck, took a picture of it and moved on. So I thought that was pretty efficient. Whole thing took about fifteen minutes and, uh, very well done. The last thing I'd like to leave you with is, when you were talking about the streetscape and there were, you opened it up for a public hearing. I didn't have anything to say at that time, but I had some things to say after listening to all of you. And please take this in the spirit that it's given. Uh, I would like to see the street improvements go all the way from Muscatel to Roland. Uh, the street pavers start fifty feet from my store. And a lot of times I'm felt, I feel like I'm a stepchild, that nothing is done at my end of the town. And to me, it's all of Temple City and that's the way I would like to see it. But, uh, I love you guys like crazy, but things move awfully doggone slow at times. And I'd like to see some of that low-hanging fruit taken care of. I was pleasantly surprised and I even texted, uh, our city manager, uh, last Saturday morning, or week ago Saturday, saying, hundred percent improvement on the planters after the power washing. They look great. So if you can do it, I mean, I don't wanna be here six months from now and nothing has been done. But at least, it, take a look at the irrigation, put some nice flowers in those planters, spend a couple thousand dollars, go to Home Depot, put them, it's gonna make it a tremendous improvement on that. Uh, so, I mean, that would be my recommendation, is to just, you know, start somewhere and do a little something. The next thing is not gonna be too popular with a few people, but I think it's best for us to take back some of those banners that we have on Las Tunas and even Rosemead Boulevard and have a shared opportunity. We're missing a great opportunity by not promoting the centennial with street banners and it needs to be done now. And maybe a street banner that's showing an old part of, uh, the city, uh, that type of thing where it could be reproduced. Uh, I think it's time to take down the old banners after years of, uh, Uncle Joe in Lansing, Michigan that has nothing to do with Temple City, but he paid eighty-five dollars so he could get a banner put up on Las Tunas Boulevard. So I think it'd be good for us to share that opportunity with the Blue Star Banner Program and any other program. And let's take back what really should be a shared opportunity to have, uh, the banners, uh, for the centennial. We're missing a great opportunity here and, you know, let's be frank, the only reason it's going on for years is that we didn't plan early enough for this. So, uh, I think it's a good thing, but, uh, let's get moving on it. So, thank you very much, might not be too popular with you tonight, but let's do something. Rather than have this thing drag on and drag on and drag on, so thank you.
I, I don't think you've said anything that we didn't say up here.
Yeah, no, I'm just rea-
We, we shouldn't be upset with you, we agree with you.
No, I'm just reaffirming it, but I, like I say, I'd like to see it go from Muscatel to.
I agree.
I mean, do something, doesn't have to be, I'm not even in favor of hiring a landscape architect. I think you, you kinda know what has to be done. You guys are really good at this, so save the twenty thousand, thirty thousand dollars and just come up with a plan and start somewhere. Doesn't have to be done all at one time, but at least let's beautify it. I mean, you got, what, thirty thousand cars on Las Tunas a day, forty thousand on Rosemead Boulevard? Let them see what Temple City is really like. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. If there is, uh, no one else, then we can, uh, adjourn the meeting. Have a good night.